We have one item of business tonight. We have a request for a variance to place a hotel and/or a restaurant in C3 zoning located at eighteen twenty East North Street. Mr. Carrington, I think we understand what you're asking for here. Can you give us a little enlightenment of maybe intent of the hotel? Are you talking about any height restrictions or anything related to that?
I can't give you any specifics. I've just had inquiries about a hotel there. I can't tell you what a gentleman's gonna do with his one story, two story, three story. But I would say to you, if you all were businessmen, that you wanted to come to Magnolia and build a hotel, that you were willing to spend two or three million dollars, I would think that you would think that a city would not say, "You can't go west, you can't do this, you can't do that." Then I would probably take my money to another town. And we don't have any specifics that says what kind of hotel or motel that you can build in this town. It has a footage of thirty feet as a max height, from what I understand.
In a C3, you're asking?
No.
You're stating?
Overall.
Okay.
That's what it stands. And with that, then, there are certain restrictions depending on whether it's C2, C3, C1, what distance you can build to your property. But to tell you that I have someone who's chomping at the bit, we did it one point in time, that party is sitting on the wayside. I don't know if they come back or not.
And then no more specifics really on a restaurant? It's really just...
Well, restaurants are already allowed in a C3 as it is now. But most hotels generally do not have the drive-in restaurants if you have a hotel. I can't think of a restaurant with a drive-in.
Any other comments you would like to make?
We got them. You just asked me a question and I didn't answer it.
Are there any other comments you would like to make?
I will. I'm here tonight as for a variance for a hotel and/or a restaurant in C3. Prior meeting, we had six parties here. They gave a unanimous vote, yes, for a C2 zoning with a C2 extension for East North. We've spent two million dollars, tax money, for this new extension, both with highway tax and city monies. This change is good for all of Magnolia. Programs like Blossom Festival, baseball, regional baseball games out at SAU, an up-and-coming Romeo Arena, the Boys Club, you do not have enough hotel, restaurants, they have to take their money elsewhere. A new hotel on nightly stays brings an AP tax, which is three percent, which comes to twenty-seven hundred dollars yearly. Three-quarters of one percent of the sales tax the city gets to spend. It helps in county road tax. One hotel alone in Magnolia, real estate tax is twenty-four thousand dollars. Seventy-nine percent of that goes to the school. Point four goes to your policemen and firemen for pension funds. There was a report just done by MEDC that states, indicates that strategic priorities for the city and county should include business development and retention, marketing and communication, workforce, community development and organization. I've got David Smith, who heads up the Boys Club. I'd like for him to say something what it means to him to run a Boys Club.
Steve asked me to come tell you about, you know, tournaments, places. And that's all I can speak to. I know that every other year we have a large tournament, and every year we'll have one or two, um, medium-sized tournaments. Last year, we had Girls Regional Tournament, fifty-six teams. And we filled up every motel room in Magnolia. We filled up the ones in El Dorado, the ones in Camden, and we're having to send people to Tech Camp. You know, having enough place for people to stay. If we want to continue to have tournaments, we always have to have, you know, we have to kind of bend down and, you know, do the best we can to serve the people that come before they take them someplace else. For about a ten-team or eleven-team tournament, we'll use a hundred to a hundred and twenty motel rooms. So you can just multiply that by, and love it. For a forty-team tournament, we'll use close to four hundred motel rooms. When we did our own economic impact survey for last year's Girls Regional, we brought in about one point seven million dollars. Using the multiplier, how much money gets spent directly, and then that money turns around and gets spent again. So if you figure, sales tax on one point seven million, that's a pretty good lead for a four-day tournament. But that's basically what I can say. And then next summer, we will have another large tournament, we'll have forty-plus team tournament next summer. So that's another four hundred motel room day for five days, about how long. That's pretty much what I can say.
Thank you, David.
Goodbye.
Steve, you have someone else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Is there someone that's a representative of those that may want to speak against this? Yes, ma'am?
I am.
Would you tell us your name?
Patsy Detway.
Patsy, would you mind coming to the podium and speaking to us, please? Patsy, do you represent everyone here, pretty much?
Pretty much, uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, Chairman Trow and Magnolia Planning Commission members. Visualize in your mind, each one of you, your home here in Magnolia. See yourself heading out the back door to your patio or your backyard. Then imagine yourself looking past the backyard up at the three-story hotel that was built recently behind your home and others in your neighborhood. You can see people at some of the windows looking down at you. If you aren't comfortable with this scenario of having a hotel in your backyard, then you also shouldn't be comfortable in allowing a variance for one and/or a restaurant in an already C3 property located at eight twenty, eighteen twenty North Street. Many citizens have been unsuccessful in trying to contact some of you, and they've had a lot of messages. And since some of them did not get to voice their penmills, I'll be summarizing things that they might have discussed with you. As noted previously at the City Council meetings, the definition of C3 on page twenty-seven of the January two thousand and three zoning and subdivision regulations manual from Magnolia Parkinson's says, quote, "The commercial zoning district C3 represents community and neighborhood-oriented uses. Adequate yards and control of coverage, a lot by building, as well as quiet nature of operation are important factors for C3 zoning." In Mr. Godwin's original request to zone the property to C3, according to the November second, two thousand and ten Banner News article, he, quote, "He explained to the commission that he believes there is, quote, 'No reason why it cannot be zoned commercial because, quote, 'Almost everything else around there is.'" That, of course, is not factual. All the properties surrounding this lot and extending from Frederick Maple Street east to the bypass is R1, R2, or P1, except for that C2 immediately across and south of North Street front end. After certain conditions were met, Mr. Godwin's property was approved to be zoned C3. And you can see the layout of all of this on this map, where the lots are, where the neighbors are, and how everything else, nothing is C2. As a commission, my neighbors and I know that you have several questions that you would like to have answered. Let me see if I can anticipate with the following what they might be. Number one, why was there no opposition by the neighborhood to changing the R1 zoning to the C3 originally? This gets personal. At that time in my life, I was going weekly to Little Rock for chemotherapy treatments as I was diagnosed for the sixth time with breast cancer. And that started last June. If someone you know, or perhaps you have ever had treatments for cancer, then you know there is an indescribable fatigue associated with it. I was still working full-time and my energy was low. After a neighbor told me about the rezoning sign, I called my local councilman and asked him what offered the MFC3. After he listed the many types of businesses to me, I decided that I couldn't spare the energy it takes to prepare and come before a commission or council to counter the measure. My decision was that I could, quote, "Live" with whatever might be built on the property. So I didn't contact my neighbors to help make them aware of it. Now I wish I had, as I never dreamed that Mr. Godwin would want to rezon the property again in such just a few months, to a C2 to possibly let a hotel be built on it. Because of the short span for the call meeting, call meeting that the Planning Commission had to approve the C2 request, many of us were unable to attend, such as my mandatory attendance at the adult ed graduation that night. Because I didn't know, not know about the called City Council meeting until only twenty-four hours before it would vote to pass the C2 zoning, my neighbors and I had to work quickly in order to let the council know of our opinions. As you know, that was delayed and then subsequently wasn't passed. However, we are here now, asking you to please keep an open mind as you consider whether or not to grant a variance for a hotel on the property that's C3. Second question, why are you against having a new hotel in Magnolia? Our neighborhood is far having a new hotel in Magnolia and far having it placed in an already C2-zoned area, of which there are many in Magnolia. There's plenty of property available along the bypass and other areas that would be much more feasible for the location of one. These taxes that we refer to would be good for Magnolia and the associated causes they voted to help. We don't disagree with all of that. Number three, what are some of the reasons that you have for a hotel not being located there? First, according to a construction engineer that I know, the property is really not large enough for a hotel. With the widening of the North, of North Street, three or more feet or so will be cut off the front part of the property of the lot. Then there will be another additional twenty-five-foot setback from the front, the twenty-five-foot back easement for a budding residential neighborhood use, and the fifteen to twenty-five feet on the side corners coming in, depending on what definition is used, page twenty-one or page twenty-eight, leaves even less land to develop. Second, the area of lot coverage, percent of lot covered by buildings, page twenty-eight in the back of your books, is twenty-five percent for a C3. That narrows its size for a possible hotel down even more. Also, there is a height restriction that was previously mentioned, but I read twenty-five feet and not thirty. Third, strict enforcement of the zoning chapter for this property is not going to cause any undue hardship for Mr. Godwin developing this property for anything already in the C3 zoning, such as eating establishments, professional buildings, retail establishments, dwellings, daycare nurseries, and kindergartens, and others. As noted in the zoning manual, page twelve, section twenty-three, two, some of the purposes of zoning is to ensure orderly development of the community for the general welfare of the citizens, promote health and the general welfare, and secure safety from fire and other dangers. Page eight also notes in twenty-seven variance that the Planning Commission shall take into account the nature of the proposed use of the land involved, existing uses of land in the vicinity, and the probable effect of such variance upon traffic conditions. The granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or interest to the other property in the area. And I have trouble with this word, pecuniary hardship. Ronnie can help with that to the developer. Standing alone shall not be deemed to constitute undue hardship. Fourth, the relationship of the property to traffic problems is a concern. For previous appearances before this commission and the council, we had traffic off the bypass on to North Street walked at forty-five to fifty miles per hour. Any entrances or exits along that front edge will increase the likelihood of a major accident happening, especially after the widening of North Street is completed. Additionally, more traffic would probably come on Marcella and Ramona, thus posing possible problems that some said in the diary were not good for children living in that area, that there shouldn't be children. There shouldn't be any children living in that area, is what that person said. Despite that, we have raised a lot of good families in those areas, and there are still quite a few children that will also be brought up to be good citizens in that area. Now, here are some questions for you as the commission. One, where is the potential buyer of this property? Where is a tentative construction plan that would show how a hotel would be positioned on the property along with its entrances and exits? When we were working with Fama's Bank with the lot that's on North and Marcella, they had a plan. They had something they could show the Planning Commission right off the bat, and they had not purchased the property yet. Can a variance really be made on this property without the concurrence of the City Council, page eight in the front of the book, since it is a subdivision there? Would the Planning Commission be able to have the last say over the elected and paid council members? Which building restrictions would the hotel go by? C2 or C3? They're very different. After all the extended discussion for the height of the placement of a sign for Fallon Tractor on the bypass, and for the building of a shed to store tires, a very limited time at another business on Main Street. Lastly, shouldn't the granting of a possible variance for a hotel and/or a restaurant in a C3 zoning that was only recently awarded that status be considered even more in-depth or not at all? Three, at the last Planning Commission meeting, one of the commissioners asked the chair how much weight is put on the adjoining landowners agreement to a variance or zoning change, to which the chair replied it would be considered strongly. Therefore, would not the ninety-eight citizens, as you noted in your packets, who have signed a petition that are direct and close landowners, as well as other concerned people signing the petition in front of you, be important in the decision of keeping the property a C3? Number four, do any of you have close associations or ties in the last couple of years to the broker? Number five, if two to three million is to be spent on a hotel, then why would there be such a bad location picked for it rather than for it to be very, very visible on the bypass? Number six, because of the many promises made to our neighborhood through the years, and some of you have been here for many of those different times we've appeared before the commission and the council, you can see from the past history of the neighborhood that, won't you please consider keeping eighteen twenty North Street a C3 zoning? Thank you.
Thank you. You're reading so well organized. You're learning things as you're reading them.
That's what we try to do with our neighborhood and the people in it when we discuss things.
You brought up some points there that, uh, that I want to try to address.
Sure.
The, uh, can a hotel fit? I have my doubts as you do, okay? It's a very limited piece of property. Again, that's not why we're here tonight.
Correct.
We're here to say yea or nay. Then those determinants will come later if they come into play. And then the setbacks and that mean the big rest for the hotel, all of those type of things will be, be there. So that's something that will be answered later, not by us. I do agree that traffic is going to be a consideration. We need to be looking at that. I think, again, because of North Street being widened, that's a good word, widened, that was a definite consideration that we looked at and tried to address, is possibly allowing that as C2. You know, let me just keep going down your list.
That's fine.
I just wrote, I just noted a few things, okay?
That ain't gonna be anything I'd reply to.
Is a variance allowed through this commission? In the past, we have allowed certain variances, okay? In the last few years, not very many, okay? But it is basically our determination to make that happen, if that's correct, Mr. Bell, to make that, and that it is a variance that's basically attached to that property for that landowner, okay? So we do have that right, okay? I don't understand your question about close association with the broker. I don't know what you're leading to there.
There are not signs on here that might think about that.
Okay. Is it conflict of interest?
Possibly.
Okay. Thank you.
May I say something?
In just a minute. Hang on, hang on. Really, again, these issues, I think each individual needs to do this up and analysis there. You're right. But I think, I'm not aware of that, okay, of that, of close association. Yes, I know, Mr. Carrington.
And it's not in that otherwise.
Okay. Again, if there's a direct relationship of fees or things, that needs to be considered. You're right.
I should have rephrased that. That is not just my intention.
Well, I'm gonna open it up for questions to Ms. Bentley, if that's okay.
Bentley.
Bentley, sorry. Mrs. Bentley, I got a question. If you would like to address questions to her at this time, the commission.
You made reference to the fact that the reason y'all didn't protest earlier is because you were sick.
Well, I don't like to be sort of sick. I was undergoing treatment for chemotherapy.
Well, that makes you pretty doggone sick.
Well, but... You don't know anything.
Well, my question is, are you the only person that could have spoken up for all of these people?
Possibly. I've been the speaker throughout the whole time that we've ever had things that we have to bring since we moved here in nineteen ninety-one. And it seems like that, I don't like to, I'm not trying to brag or anything, but it seems like with all the different ideas that I seem to be the one that can pull them together and put them in a logical way for, to present, and also to research other things that need to be researched to, you know, get our, the whole scope of what we're trying to have commissions or councils look at.
Anyone else? Is there anyone else here that we would like to speak with, Ms. Bentley, or with Mr. Carrington on this particular issue?
Do we need to show a hand, or are you saying it's not necessary?
Not necessary. Okay. I don't need it. You need it? Okay. I think we're gonna open up our discussion. We may have some more questions, if you don't mind.
I'm trying to answer any questions.
But just open up discussion among ourselves. I'm sorry. You was at that one?
Steve, I have some questions for you, since you seem to know the hotel person and Mr. Godwin. Hotel owners, just like various investors, they will research an area to place a hotel somewhere. Why just there, when the whole, I mean, there's several properties on the bypass that are available for sale?
If I'm showing you homes, and I've got three homes for sale, and neither of any of those fits the bill, you've asked for me to find a piece of property that I think is suitable for what you're wanting, that's how I earn my living. Just because there's three for sale doesn't mean there might not be something else out there better to suit your needs. And that was what I contract with, with Mr. Godwin, to find the highest and best use and most monies for him. That's what my job is.
Are you contracted with the hotel owner too?
No, neither.
And what is the hotel owner, since you've been dealing with hotel prospective owner, what is his plan to protect the unit for the neighborhood?
Well, that I can't tell you because we don't have anything on contract right now. And after going through City Council and other things, we may have scared somebody off. And if you scare it off, who's to know that they want to come back and do anything in this town? You know, this town, for thirty years now, has not grown. This town had a sign when I moved here in A1, said fifteen thousand people, and years before that was eighteen. You're barely getting eleven thousand people now. El Dorado was twenty-eight, there are eighteen thousand. Southwest Arkansas, you're losing people. And for the different programs that I've already made mention, they're willing to come to this town and spend money. And that's money that we have then to grow this town. But if we get kicked in the teeth when somebody wants to come here and say, "No, we just prefer that you don't come to our town," I think that's, what's the use in having a city planning commission? What's in the city having commissioners and everything else? Why do we have a book? I mean, if you're going to curtail what is positive and say, "No, you can't come here."
I don't think anybody, may I say, since he is...
It's fair.
...starting to get in my direction. I don't believe anybody on the commission is saying they don't want a hotel here, or they don't want people here, or they don't want new business here, or they don't want Magnolia to grow.
But they want it in where they want it, not where who is coming here to put it here would like to be.
Well, I don't think personally, and this is my own personal opinion, that somebody who's coming in here to put a business in would want to offend the citizens. I think they would want to work with the community as much as you would want to work with them. I don't, I just by the heart of me, this is the only place that that hotel owner would want. But that's just mine, people. But we're definitely for growth.
Is there enough room on that?
I leave that up to the hotel developer here. There are rules and regulation in place, and it will be for that particular hotel to decide, yea or nay.
But your professional experience?
The, a party who looked at it, he said yes, depending upon how many rooms he decided to put there. That would determine.
With the height restriction, which we mentioned earlier, it seems to me you're gonna have two stories of the max where it would be there. So, you know, I would think, again, there's limited quantity that can go there. Again, that's just an opinion. I don't think we've done any studies or anything. It's really not modeled here, but I'm just stating that as a fact. And I think we've been asked to think through someone building down onto property, maybe to the north there. So that's, again, that's a consideration we need to see, but I think with the limitation of that second floor and then the elevation change of that property, I suspect it's gonna have to be moved there, I think, I think, or...
Isn't that the same height of the billboard?
That we discussed last meeting?
If they're going to forty-two, they're not moving to thirty. Is that correct?
You're asking, is the billboard and the hotel going in the same project?
Height.
Oh.
In reference, height, reference. In reference, height reference.
Yes, the, the previous restriction was thirty feet.
And we were concerned over...
We were beneath that.
Could see?
Yes.
Whether it was high or just below, it was neither.
Yeah.
No, I understand.
Right.
But it was viewed, correct?
Correct.
My point being is, is that, is there some way we can make this a one-story and everybody happy?
When somebody asks for a variance, you have the right to do certain things to limit that variance. Is that where you're going?
Yes, I am. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to look at where...
Make that determination.
Where it can be worked out for all parties. Where you say you have one level, that doesn't have to do with anybody.
Right.
Or, and I believe this is and/or, which is either or.
Again...
A restaurant, there's nothing on that.
No. Uh, but then again, there are limitations on the height of that setback requirements and stuff like that. But again, a restaurant is allowed in C three at present, so you really doesn't need a variance for that.
So, we've narrowed it down then? We're not just looking at and/or restaurant, we're looking at hotel owner?
He's, he's asking for both, but I'm saying, I don't see the variance required for a restaurant. Mr. Godwin.
Is, uh, is it not correct that C three can have a apartment on it?
A multifamily dwelling?
An apartment building.
Okay. Yes, it can.
Okay, and what would be the difference if you've got a three-story apartment building?
Again, I don't, you cannot put three stories at a four-foot...
Or a two-story or up to that thirty-foot height. What would be the difference? An apartment building or a hotel building, far as looking out the windows?
I, I don't know of any. Okay. Again, that's an opinion.
And then, out of the people that report the property, if I was moving into a town, I would want to figure out whichever property I wanted to put something on. You know? Now, that property has got access to three different driveways, makes a world of difference than one driveway.
Yes, sir. It does.
You know?
Okay. Uh, yes, yes.
Just one quick, just from maybe mine and everybody else, the C three requirements, even with this variance granted, the C three requirements would be a lot of it, a twenty-five percent, two-story building, and twenty-five feet maximum height. Whether any, whatever we put there, if we grant variance for hotels, if we, if someone with no variance put in an apartment building, everything else, the C three restrictions are what applies, not C two.
And again, that would probably...
Without additional variance.
That's correct. That would come in a form of a motion, and the whole motion would have to be accepted or rejected at that point, if you put more, let's say, tags on that, that, that motion. But as it stands, and you just approved for what is being asked, the limitation, I would interpret of the C three would still come into play. Any questions or additions?
Mr. Carrington needs to ask, does it, does it kill, I mean, does it, if, if you're gonna be limited to twenty-five feet, does it kill the plan in the entirety and make it moot point?
Well, again, gentlemen, I'll leave that up to whoever the hotel designer is, because I can't tell, I mean, he may go in there and do a horseshoe shake. You know, uh, there's a number of things that they could do, and I'm gonna leave up, that up to the professional who's going to put his money up and build that hotel.
I think, again, a sequence of events, is, is he allowed to do that? Then there would be more information provided to see, does it meet the setback requirements, et cetera, et cetera, height requirements? Once that plan is, is developed, and then Mr. Allison would be that authority, would make that, bring that before, so the later date, that's a good question.
What we don't want is to approve it with, with C three conditions and then come back for another request later, and we're gonna be going through all this again.
Totally agree. Totally agree. I don't know why we're restricting...
But at that point, we would have a specific plane, we would have a drawing of a specific plane.
I think that would be nice. Again, I just don't think they're there.
No, I'm not.
And again, you have a, you have a right to reject it not having enough information if you so desire. Okay?
At this, at this point, we could, I, if, if, if you'd like to do, I'm gonna be assured that a hotel developer is gonna be back here requesting other variances and requiring, you know, whether one would have to revisit it or not, that's...
But if you can't put it on there, who's gonna be back?
If it was for the first property, yeah. Uh, again, we can't stop it. It can kind of bore us, but we have to understand how we've gotten where we are.
But what is the goal? Is the goal to approve it, but only with restrictions that it can never, never happen? I mean, that shouldn't be our goal.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, we don't have enough information to make that C three.
I'm not sure.
And, and you have a right to say, I want that information. I don't know how we can say that, but, uh, subject to meeting certain requirements in the motion itself. Again, the request before us is, it goes with the same, we want to place a hotel on that piece of property, not with the limitations that are given in our, in our...
But you have a big question, also, will it fit? And then we've given a wanted...
Okay. Do you have? Really? And I don't have a result.
The hotel owner does not have a flat of it, has not gone...
I don't have a hotel name right now.
You don't have a hotel name?
No, I do not. I do not have anything in contract. That fell through.
There isn't...
If I might address, uh, the commission on that particular procedure, if you approve the request, then whatever happens, a hotel could go there, it must comply with all C three requirements. Period. Unless on later times someone comes back that's being pointed out and asks for additional in the issue. The other consideration that you have a right to make is a time requirement. It's not uncommon, when a variance is requested, to put a time limitation, that if this doesn't happen within X amount of time, then variance lapses. And whoever's the owner, I think, can come back and request again. So in other words, you don't have to leave a full agreement. Excuse me, please.
Any other questions from the commission? Any other comments? Okay. I'll entertain your motion.
Well, I said it last time, I think the city is spending a lot of money, gonna spend a lot of money, widening this more. I think, you can, with all due respect, I think that's a corridor growth for the city. I think we would not be doing our due diligence for the population as a whole if we said we're gonna restrict that corridor to residential or to, to, not residential, but I, I think eventually it's gonna be commercial all the way through. It's gonna be one, one version of commercial or another. I don't think what Mr. Godwin's asking for is, is, um, outside, too far outside of what's allowed today. Um, so I would move that we grant the variance for a hotel in that C three zone.
May I respond to that? It is commercial right now, and you can set a line of making there.
Thank you. Uh, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
This, this, on the board, this motion does reflect the report, the request of a different hotel and/or restaurant. I understand, I understand it goes, the restaurant is not needed, but I think his request is dealing with a restaurant and the hotel, so you may not, if you intend to prove what he's asking for in the motion, might not do it.
Do you want to be able to allow variance to a hotel and/or restaurant in C three to the kind of location twenty-four?
It is, it is read here, basically, in, uh, announcement, to allow a hotel and/or restaurant in this three, C three zoning located at eighteen twenty East York Street. Yes, you can, but I want a second first. Is there a second? I have a second. Okay. No. Have a comment?
No, because the, uh, a time limit, so it is not open-ended till we end up, as what Mr. Kent said, where we have a revolving service...
Would you like to recommend a time?
Um, what is a reasonable time that you have to find someone who actually put a hotel on there?
That's six foot on the question, you've got a session.
Okay.
Six months is pretty short, but, but, you feel comfortable with that?
I don't want to do longer, just so long as we have some kind of limitation on...
It's been suggested for six months, but you won't let in your motion, but you have limitation.
We have a long list.
I don't, I don't know whether it's...
Six, a year, could you put a kind of... Do you want a clarification on that?
Well, that would depend upon... Well, if it's not, if there's no building permit issued consistent to a motion, within the period of time, if there is a period of time, then that variance, uh, condition lapses. Whoever's employed must start over and come back to you.
That's a picture.
Why should a person be limited on what they're gonna do for that thing? A hotel, a restaurant in this town? That's to say, everybody from now on that wants to come here to this town, you're gonna restrict them to build something or sell something in a specific time? There's no other town. No.
You asked for a variance, Steve.
I understand, but the book does not say that I am to be given any certain time period.
You have that right?
Take the right then.
That's what she's suggesting.
Okay. They kick us in the teeth.
Uh, this isn't meant to kick in the teeth, as much as it is to have some kind of boundaries on, uh, what we're doing, so it's just not this open-ended thing that just evolves around and around and around. To keep them going in where Mr. Kent talked about going, where they keep coming back with more additions and such as that.
Well, I don't, I don't know if that necessarily means that, um, I think if we put a timeline on it, it's gonna put it more likely into a circle where we don't have to address it again. My personal opinion, I'm not gonna be any, any less likely to think that it's the right thing to be seven months and then, man, does it need to expire? My opinion, no, but, in my, my perspective, then.
But you have the motion on the floor.
One thing that it would do, good or bad, it would give any potential of help or an opportunity to do something, indicate an interest, get something firm before us, uh, and/or, uh, build it somewhere else. I suppose that would be one thing, get this done, and, and if it's not suitable, whatever, butterfly to the town, then it would expire, and, and that would be bad. Twenty-five time, twenty-nine months, to give time to somebody that's really interested in doing it, to get it done from a development standpoint.
You know, I've done a little bit, you know, six months, you can't, can't even hardly get started with the, with the, the technical drawings and, and permits and, and financial approvals. If, if you want a time limit, twenty-four months, that's two years, and that's a reasonable time.
You would know more than that than you would have known.
So, you wish to amend your motion to put a time limit to twenty-four months?
Not really, but...
That's, the motion, you don't have to do any...
You don't have to.
Stand firm, you wish?
I guess you're right in the truth.
To stand firm?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's already the motion and the second, with no time limit? Okay. Does everybody understand the motion? Okay. Uh, all in favor of the motion, which is to accept the variance, please say aye. Well, I'm sorry, raise your right hand. Three. All right? All opposed, uh, by a like sign. One, two, three, four. The motion does not pass. Mr. Carrington, would you like to say something?
I'd like to ask a question to the funding commission. You that sat here before and voted six, unanimous for it, with an extension of C two, why now do you change your vote?
That question is not in order, and I would advise you not to answer. You're not here under interrogation, can't help you from following that, and I would not to.
I, I think, uh, I would entertain a motion to dismiss the motion to the... Second.
At least two years, well...
All in favor, say aye. Yeah, we are, four to three. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Godwin?